Good morning. I'm calling to order the meeting for the Lepore County Commissioners for May 1st, 2019. If you could all rise for the pleasure of allegiance and if you could after that, please let's observe a moment of silence for Senator Lugar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we're sent next, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Auditor, roll call, please.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Mrs. Mathias.
Present.
Mr. Merzinski. A quorum is present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Approval of minutes from April 17th.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from April 17th as presented.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And consideration of claims. Madam Auditor.
This week, we have payroll ending April 23rd, 2019, in the amount of $1,226,911.39 and miscellaneous claims in the amount of $978,471.97.
Thank you. You reviewed the claims and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President, motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before going to the public comment, I just wanted to express my condolences to the Lugar family. Senator Lugar, I had the opportunity of meeting him a few times on the Capitol Hill when I had gone there to advocate on behalf of the help for health care and on behalf of medicine. And he was always a gentleman, very, very well-read, well-thought-of. He was an icon from the state of Indiana, a true statesman. And in today's day and age, I really feel we need people like Senator Lugar, a great statesman in Indiana.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Dr. Cora.
Thank you. Public comment. Anybody from the public wishes to comment? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Walter Bass, B-A-S-S, just like the fish. My address is 5789 West Joliet Road, Lepore, Indiana. First of all, I'd like to say that for 17 years, I'm retired for 17 years, I've worked for one of the largest road construction companies in Illinois. You can Google them, K-5 Construction.
Okay.
They've done all kinds of roadwork for the city of Chicago, counties in Illinois, the state. They've done runways and that at O'Hare Airport and Midway Airport. Now, Reece Riley just ground up our road and repaved it from the Westville City Limits all the way to Route 39. And I'm asking this council, do not pay their bill until someone comes out and looks at this road. In my 17 years' experience, I have never seen in my life a more crappier job done on a road. Take a look at Johnson Road. Reece Riley just paved it last summer at the end. This spring, they were out with their tar machine, filling in all kinds of cracks with tar and filling in holes. Now, I don't know whose road that is, whether that's county or state, but that road looks like garbage now. On Joliet Road, you can see all asphalt has to be laid at a certain temperature. The asphalt was being laid too cold. You can see all the cold spots in the road. They only had at times one asphalt roller going. They did not use the vibrators on the asphalt rollers. I even went out there and talked with the one guy that was running the roller. He insists to me, you don't need to do it. You need to have the vibrators going to compact it down. There's not only cold spots in the asphalt where they should have used a shuttle buggy. A shuttle buggy is a machine that goes in front of the asphalt paver that asphalt gets dumped into, gets remixed, gets reheated to the proper temperature and laid down. Reece Riley also had no one from their QC department out there. K-5 Construction, every time we did a job, we had our QC department out there. There was at least two guys. One guy had a big yellow box that he'd go laying on the hot asphalt and would read the temperature. And if that temperature was not in within specs, he shut the job down. The second guy went with what they call a leveller. It's a 10-foot piece of channel, aluminum channel, with a wheel on the front, wheel on the back, a handle in the center with metal spikes coming down. And he'd go walking behind the rollers. If any of them spikes hit the asphalt, that means it wasn't level. Okay? You can go out there after a rain. You don't have puddles. I can actually go with a fishing pole and go fishing in the, I call them lakes on Joliet Road now.
So.
They went along where they stop at the end of the day and they start up the next day at that point. You're supposed to start six inches back on the asphalt you laid yesterday. Start laying the asphalt. What they did was they went two feet past where they stopped and started laying asphalt. So now, when you're driving, you hit that and then you hit where the new asphalt is and you bang up in the air.
Right.
And what's going to happen now, your plows are going to come down the road, they're going to catch it, peel it right up.
We'll have Mr. Young, Bob Young, look into it and then we'll be in touch with you and we'll let you know what.
Okay. Because also, they're supposed to have a crown in the center of the road. They don't have a crown. What they have is you go down the road, the west side road in sections is higher than the eastbound. So you got that big lip there in the center.
Sure.
Mr. Bass, what is your address again?
5789 West Joliet Road. Phone number is 448-1976. And I know that the contract for this road had to be a minimum of $300,000. I'd be willing to bet it's more like $500,000 to do this road. And I urge you not to pay it. Have Reece Riley come out, redo that road. I've never in my 17 years seen a road done so bad. Reece Riley would never make it in Illinois. They'd go bankrupt because the state, the counties, the city of Chicago, everybody would make them redo the road.
We'll definitely get back in touch with you on that. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Anybody else from the public wishes to comment?
My name is Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City, Indiana.
Morning.
Good morning. I stand in front of the courthouse every day trying to get rid of Ron Meyer and any other corrupt official. I have been harassed, intimidated, messed with. I got emails, numerous emails from Shaw Freeman. It's time for you guys to remove those voting machines out of the courthouse. They shouldn't be there. I have a right to support any candidate I want to choose and I have a right to put that sign, even if it's on county property, that's where you have it at. I have a right to put those signs with outside of 50 feet of that polling place door. I'm not being allowed to do that. If you don't want the signs there, it seem like you guys are hypocrites. You shouldn't have the voting machines there. We have a right to stand for our candidates. And this is the only county where they don't have a big sign that says "Early Voting," arrow pointing to the courthouse. It's not even advertised. It's sad. That's one of my issues. And then the next issue is absentee ballots. I have like close to 20 of them here with me right now. Approximately, I think nine of them got mailed, no, I'm sorry, eight of them got mailed out. There's three more that's being held up right now. These absentee ballots, the individuals request for these absentee ballots to be mailed to my address, 617 Union Street. I have one person, Thomas Lewis, another person, Mr. or Ms. Berry, and I don't know the third person, but they requested for those absentee ballots to go to 617 Union Street. It's right here on paragraph two. But our voter registration people, the same ones Kathy Kobach has been complaining about running rogue, doing what they want to do, they have called these individuals and threatened them. I think the proper protocol was to turn it over to the Board of Elections, but they did their own investigation. And then they got it into the state police hands after all of that. The Board of Elections in voter registration violated the law. Those people have the right to have the absentee ballot go to where they requested it. And as of today's date, it hasn't happened yet. Kathy Kobach is the worst clerk we have ever had in the county.
Yeah, Mr. McCormick, you know, I appreciate your comments, but I don't want you to say...
Her performance.
No, no, no. I think personally, yeah, personal attacks on individuals is not...
Her professional performance is horrible. She will not return no phone calls. In fact, how can we even file a complaint with the Board of Elections? Do we have forms that the general public can just get? Is it online?
Yeah.
Can we go to the courthouse?
Yeah, you know, you can email me and I can forward it to the Board of Commissioners. And so those are the two issues.
Why don't we make it easier for all the citizens? Why can we just can't have a form online so we can just file it? So we can file our complaints?
All right.
My last issue is this. Couple of weeks ago, Assistant Chief Royce Williams, Michigan City Police Department, unsealed my criminal record for revenge. I went to court, faced my due process. I went to prison for something I didn't do. The Indiana Supreme Court reversed my case and sent me home because of racism. The same racism that still exists here in this county. It's not going nowhere under this leadership. Royce Williams decided to unseal my record and put it online on Facebook. I reached out, tried to file charges against him. It is a Class A misdemeanor, by the way. And then using the police data system that he used to get my mug shots and stuff off, that escalated it to a 1983 lawsuit. And it's also a felony for what he did. As of today, the Sheriff Department, county attorney, nobody seemed to take my complaint serious. Every day, these people are trying to arrest me for getting people to vote. They don't want to leave power. And I'm getting very tired of this. I'm very tired of this. I'm just here to tell you all, in 2020, I told you when we were working for every one of you people in the county, we were going door-to-door, we had no problems. In 2020, we're going to take something from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to make a comment? Anybody else from the public? Seeing non-departmentate comments, anybody, any department head? Yes, please.
On a happier note.
Yes.
I'd like to give you a recap of the activities our office saw last year.
Yes.
This year, it's a little bit too early and we don't have April...
Henry, would you introduce yourself and tell what department you're from so the public knows?
Anne Marie Pollan, the Building Commission Office, Building Commissioner.
Thanks, Anne Marie.
Last year, we issued 1,397 building permits. 91 were for new homes, 36 of which were in a subdivision. We had 13 new commercial buildings and eight commercial remodels. The Board of Zoning Appeals saw 80 variances, nine of which were for small businesses. Those businesses included an auction house, campground, antique shop, banquet hall, an expansion of an existing food truck business to include an ice cream shop, sand mining business under new ownership in Hannah, expanded chiropractor chiropractic business to include yoga, a mini storage facility, and a green biofuel facility located in the KIP. The Plan Commission saw quite a few vacated alleyways, four rezonings from business to industrial, and one from business to residential to accommodate a new subdivision, which will, here tomorrow, at tomorrow's Platte meeting, that consists of 27 lots. We have been working with the city, with the DNR. Christopher Burke Engineering is applying to revise the maps that are related to the lakes, Pine, Stone, Lily, and Clear Lakes. The base flood elevation has been reduced by about 19 inches. So a lot of the people that were in the floodplain are no longer in the floodplain. So he's working to get those map revisions done. We will be sending out 316 letters to notify the property owners that 13% have been removed from the floodplain and 61% remain. But as far as the actual structures, current statistics show that 97 structures are in a floodplain, but due to the letter of map revisions, only 78 structures, 78 structures have been removed and only 19 remain. So this will help people with their flood insurance.
That's fantastic news, actually.
That's very good.
Yeah, real good news. Thanks for your hard work on that.
Okay. And last, but certainly not least, we issued the certificate of occupancy for the new hospital last November. And my inspector spent about three hours every day there. There was about 200 to 300 people working there every day. And just to give you an idea of how many inspections they did, each time they finished a room, they would put an orange dot of paint on a post. That way, the next workers could come in and drywall, knowing that the roughens had been done. And just to give you an idea of how many inspections, they went through 72 gallons of paint and it was just a dot that they did each time they finished. But I think we're very fortunate to have such a fine hospital.
Anne Marie, I have a couple of comments. First of all, please let your inspectors know they did a phenomenal job. And I've heard this from many people who are involved in the construction of that hospital. So thank them on our behalf. The second thing is, now you gave some statistics about building permits and all. Compared to previous years, is it about the same or is it more or how does it compare?
In 2017, we had a record year. So we're down a little bit from 2017. However, in 2017, we saw more, smaller permits. We did more homes last year than we did in the previous year. So it balanced though.
Right.
Yeah. Anne Marie, would you be kind enough to put that on, some of your facts on a grid? Because I think once we get our new website up and running, that would be really interesting and then year-to-year, be able to do a comparison.
Sure.
So I think, you know, we often beat ourselves up and say, "Lepore County, just we're stagnant, blah, blah, blah." When you hear those numbers, it's pretty impressive. I'm especially excited about the Clear Lake floodplain issues.
Yes.
Because that affects families and their ability to stay, stay age in place and all of that.
Right.
So that's really good news.
Right.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other department heads? Mr. Lake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Lake, prosecuting attorney.
Good morning.
Came here to talk to you and I heard some of the comments when I came in, so I'll address that at the end. But I wanted to let you know where we're at. We had talked about doing a mental health court.
Yes.
And Judge Alvezos and Mary had been working on the program for that. They sent off a letter downstate to basically say that we're going to start that program for both juvenile, which will be the first one in the state of Indiana, and then also for adults. So, and then Judge Burgess, I met with him yesterday and talked to him about his interest in it as well. So that's on the planning stages, that's going to be coming down, down the road. Child review, fatality review committee, we have our first meeting next week.
Great.
And then that's going to be formed, I've been in touch with the state coordinator for that. They're going to be coming up for that meeting. One of them is, and we're going to be then forming our review team so that, because we have some child fatalities that we have to do.
Can you email me the time when your meeting? I'd like to attend the first one.
We will. This is for the committee, because the committee, we have the five-member committee. I'll be happy to email you. I'll do that after.
John, thanks for doing that. That was a, that committee dropped off the radar somewhere and that's just too important of an issue for Lepore County.
It's a mandate.
When a child is deceased, we need to understand the reasons and thank you for getting that activated again.
Thank you.
Huge.
And unfortunately, we've had several deaths in the last few months that are tragedies. So we're trying to deal with that. Some of the things that we're going to be doing is drug treatment. We're going to be with the sheriff's participation and with Judge Alvezos again, and Community Corrections with Rob Neary, one of the things I want to do because one of their dorms is just, you know, is just vacant. So what we're doing is we've identified people who, and we also have overcrowding. So what we're trying to do is take people who need drug treatment, who are waiting for the phase one that we haven't been able to do, and Judge Alvezos had paid for, I think, eight of those last year and they only held three of those classes. We have found two providers, choices, and it's frontline, frontline is combined with North Shore. So we have two separate providers that are willing to provide drug treatment. And part of that will be the Vivitrol program. And what we learned is that we can't do that, if they're in the jail, the county will have to pay for it. So we came up with a way that we're going to utilize Community Corrections, send people, identify people, jail then gives us people, because they understand who's under the influence of drugs or alcohol when they come in. They let us know who they are and then they send those names to us. We vet those names versus, you know, what kind of crimes there are. And then we are going to then send them over starting Monday and start drug treatment. And when they're over there, they're going to be OR'd into this program, not having the freedom to leave because they're going to be mandated. If they want to leave, they come back to the jail. And what's going to happen is that because they're OR'd, they're no longer in our custody, but they're going to be able to get hip. And so then we'll be able to give them the shot and give them drug actual treatment. It also helps us with our drug court because now we're going to be able to identify people with these longer sentences that would be good for that, also get people who otherwise wouldn't qualify to get them treated. So it's a way for both alcohol, opioids, and other treatment to do that. So that's something we're just, you know, the judge and I both kind of had a meeting of minds at Community Corrections and said, this is what we need to do. So we're kind of working on that. I want to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you for doing it. And it's something that we've been wanting to see it happen, so I appreciate you making it happen.
Right. And then another thing that we're, had conversations with, there's a couple of things just that we're going to be dealing with, a property crimes task force, because the amount of property crimes that are going, burglaries and thefts, and just, we're going to be coming. I know I haven't talked to the sheriff yet today, but I got to talk to him about this because we wanted to come to the commissioners about an ordinance on pawnbrokers and them reporting everything they come in so we can put it on and be able to, you know, deal with that issue because we have a real big problem. It's exploded and I know that, just talking to Steve Westfall yesterday from Michigan City, the number of cases they had last month is over 500 on property crimes. And it's just, it's just 100 a week. It's just people coming in, stealing stuff, pawn-ing it, and going out. So it's a major problem. So we're going to be coming back to the commissioners, asking for an ordinance that they kind of did over in St. Joe County, which requires pawnbrokers. I know there's a big lobby for pawnbrokers and that thing, but we got to, we got to get a handle on this and deal with that issue. Another thing that we're talking about doing, we're going to start by the end of the year, is an animal abuse advisory panel, which is kind of like child fatality review team, same type thing, but dealing with animal abuse and just basically education. And we've been dealing with a sexual assault response team as well, that we have a meeting next week and we're working on all that. So those are all things that we're doing. That's why I came to here to talk. I heard Mr. McCormick say some stuff. I want, and I heard over the radio, and Ron Miller called me on Monday and asked me about a report that supposedly was sitting on my desk from the state police. I have not received anything. I had a meeting with the state police yesterday. I do not have anything with regard to election, what the board did, absentee voters. I don't have anything yet to review. So if and when I get that, I'll review it as soon as possible. And now we're within a week of the thing. But I know that was on the radio, I heard that, and then Ron Miller said he has a source that says, it was on my desk since Thursday. I said, well, that's news to me. And I checked and we have not, and we also have access now to, as of April 3rd, RMS, which is the reporting system for all of the law agencies. So I have access to all of the, you know, the approved reports from any law enforcement agency in Lepore County. So I can go in and check and look at things and be able to check on the status of cases and stuff now. And that really has helped us with our discovery in that. So, okay. Sorry, I don't know.
Thanks for your report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other department heads?
Really important.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mark Pijelski, county council. It was roughly 18 years ago, I was appointed to be on NIKD board through John Jones when he was president. And NIKD was formed in 1981 with the idea when there was a bankruptcy with the railroad, that they split up the railroad and they allowed the freight to go commercial with outside owned entities to own it, and the four counties to run the railroad. And it was originally with the only, originally it was only set with the four counties, two representatives, a commissioner, and council from each one. Later on, it was, it was added just a few years back, a ridership, a government, governor appointee, and a union appointee. Through my tenure, even though that we only meet every other month, which was six times a year, I've spent a lot more time doing work there. We lost the CEO, Jerry Hannis, well, a gentleman that did great work for the railroad, got it to railroad from, from, from the brown wooden, I mean, the orange wooden cars to the metal ones that we see today. With that in mind, I've had to go to Washington four times. I spoke in front of Congress. I've been in State House 17 times, spoke to representatives in there. So work is just not simply the six meetings that I went to per year. We actually, when Jerry left, I was the individual that had to go through 100 applicants to find, to find Mike Nolan, who's our CEO right now, just to get him to fill in for that. So he's doing a great job, fantastic job, but we, those are things that you do beyond the job of that. So when Mark, it was a quote from Mark Rytanzenite from St. Joe County, said, "How did you feel about this? It's like getting into divorce and having divorce papers sent to you because when you put that much heart and that much soul into something, that's what it does to you." With the new makeup, disappointed. I'm disappointed that we couldn't have at least filed a tenure, maybe the end of the year, then appointed a new committee, a new staff through the governor's office. I'm not happy with NDOT being this. I mean, you hear the complaints of the roads conditions and things that we can't get right now. I don't think the chairman of the NDOT has enough time to spend about railroad issues when he hasn't had any clue how to do it. In the 18 years, he's never been, or anybody from NDOT's never been to our meetings, never. The railroad's self-run by the group that we have now. Now it will not be self-run. It runs through the governor's office and it'll be run in discretion. If he has a whim that a person doesn't like, he can replace him during the year. There are no terms. At least we had terms before. So I would hope that we look at this thing because when this governance law came in effect in 1982, the law stated that there was a corporation formed, and the corporation is us, the four counties. I believe that's against the law. And that's, again, I only play attorney on every fourth Monday during council meetings, but I do try to play attorney once in a while. So I would hope that the commissioners would choose to take this issue on. And I have stepped down my name out there. I brought Ms. Wilson-Madison up as the name. I hope that they do consider somebody from our county. There has to be two dumbs, two Republicans for these, and I hope that that's the case because we're going to need some strong leadership to speak in front of the governor. I think whoever it is is going to have to have the time to go there. And I don't have that time to go during the week to go see the governor because I think there's going to be a personal one-on-one interaction that has to happen for this board to work. Because a lot of people, including the governor, has not had experience with the railroad. We have. The county has. So I do appreciate your time to let me talk today. Second thing, I would like to, gentlemen, I did talk about the road. I've talked to both Mr. Wilson-Madison and Dr. Cora and Mr. Merzinski about the Johnson Road. I would like to see an independent engineer look at this road because I, because if you look at some of the roads and how these roads are being constructed, let's look at Cleveland Avenue, completely tore out, rebuilt, what they call, what I call network cracking every 10 to 12 feet. We can drive it anytime we want to. You hear the "kuthunk, kuthunk, kuthunk" noise going down Cleveland. That road's already been tore out and replaced twice since it's brand-new. It wasn't one where you're doing work on one side of the road and you're working, that was a complete new road, new base, new everything, and we're still having problems getting roads right in northwest Indiana. If we, the problem we have with county roads is we're only putting in small thicknesses of blocktop and they have to be right. And I don't, and with Johnson Road, as you know, I was speaking out loud about the issues because I was involved when DLZ originally was going to do the contract, and that contract we didn't make through, which the underbase was, was subpark, was not correct. And those, I expressed my, those at the council meeting. So I would hope that we look at an outside group to look at it, to get Millings and actually detect, see who's at fault because NDOT has a road right now that, as you guys know, that is a highway that's having the same, same problems Johnson Road. So the two areas, I'm glad you guys let me talk today. I have to go, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I want to thank you for putting in a lot of your personal time on behalf of South Shore. I remember when the double track was being considered, I remember you, you spent a lot of time working with Congressman Wisslawski and so.
Joe Donnelly.
Yeah, Joe Donnelly. And so thank you for your efforts, and we'll work through this.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other department heads?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Andrew McGuire from La Porte County EMS. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak about our department. It was hard to kind of pick and choose what to highlight about our department, so I think I narrowed it down to about 45 minutes, so.
So you do know, Mark, and you do know that you can come back other times and report again.
Right. So feel free to cut me off if you need to. So I want to start by giving a brief history of our department. So we were established in 1974, and we were initially part of the Health Department. And in the early 1970s, late 60s, 70s, a lot of communities were developing EMS systems. And this was, this stemmed from a document called the White Paper, which kind of highlighted the lack of emergency care in the U.S., and it was causing deaths and disabilities in the, in the United States. So La Porte County EMS started with just two ambulances in Michigan City and one in La Porte. Wantotaw was still covered by a funeral home. So just nearly 45 years ago, we were still using funeral homes for coverage for our EMS services. So in 1977, Wantotaw base was added, and in 1979, we detached from the Health Department and became our own entity. So throughout the year, several more ambulances were added as the demands increased on EMS. So we run about, I'm sorry, so today we run six ambulances, six 911 ambulances out of three stations, along with one transfer ambulance that operates Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. So as you know, we are adding our additional seventh ambulance, which we hope to have in place by July 1st of this year. This ambulance, as many know, was generously donated, $196,000 donation by an individual who still wishes to remain anonymous. So the seventh ambulance was added due to an overwhelming increase in call volume. So initially, it'll be operated out of our La Porte base facility, and then hopefully next year, we'll move it to our new Rowan Prairie base facility. So in addition to our ambulances, we also run five advanced support-equipped Tahoe's, which we assign to our upper management. And those Tahoe's are used both on duty and off duty. So if we're working a large event, say, a multiple patient event, or multi-vehicle accident, or we call for a helicopter, those Tahoe's are activated and used. And any time that our crews, our on-duty crews out in the field need extra help with anything, if they're overwhelmed, or if they need a command structure set up, they can request an administration page be put out by 911, and that activates all of our off-duty people who are available. We do come in and respond, and that also includes Eric and I. We oftentimes go out in the field and respond and help out as needed. So we have a total of 53 field employees. So this includes our administration, our field management, and a field training officer and a training coordinator, sorry. We also have eight part-time employees. We do our own in-house billing and coding, and our billing department consists of five full-time employees and two part-time employees, so a total of 68 employees. Last year, we ran a total of 15,725 calls, which is another increase over the previous year for the 10th consecutive year of increased call volume. So just a few things to point out. We are a five-time winner of the State of Indiana ALS Provider of the Year Award, which we're very proud of. Hopefully this year will be our number six. We're going for it again. We are the sole provider of 911 service for La Porte County. I know sometimes you see other ambulances in the community. A lot of those ambulances are transfer ambulances. They work with hospitals and nursing homes to transfer non-emergency patients back and forth. We get asked that all the time. Why are there other ambulances in the community? They're mainly transfer ambulances. We do run our own transfer service also, as I stated previously. And if you, so if you have a loved one that needs to go back to the nursing facility or go back home from the hospital, we can facilitate that, and those appointments can be made through our office. Oftentimes, we can do that a lot cheaper than the private services, about, about half the cost of a private service. So feel free to give us a call if you have a need for that. So a couple of things I'll point out, and I will wrap this up real quickly for you here. So we are heavily involved in our community. We provide medical coverage for large events like the fair, boat races. We cover high school sporting events, graduations, and marathons, other events within our community. We work with all of our local schools, providing education, tours, demonstrations. We're currently working with the Healthcare Foundation of La Porte with a, on a AED program. It's an AED placement program, placing AEDs where they're needed, mainly in large buildings, churches, schools. Eric is heavily involved with that, my Assistant Director, Eric Festermaker. We also do a program, we have partnered with the Health Department here at La Porte, with the Crips for Kids Program, so we give out information for that. We also do what's called Adults Program, which is direct on-scene education. So if we're on a call and we have the time, if it's kind of a non-emergency type of call and we're in somebody's house, and we realize there's a child under the year of one, the age of one in the home, we provide some education on safe sleep habits and also the Crips for Kids information. And we also go as far as even inspecting, if we have time, their sleep area, just to make sure that it isn't cluttered with a whole bunch of items and the baby's not sleeping safely, or the baby's sleeping with another individual in a, in another bed. We provide them information on safe sleep habits. So I'll wrap up. This is just kind of the tip of the iceberg, you know, a little five-cent tour, but I hope it gave you a little bit of a glimpse into our department. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Andrew, thank you.
I work with you and your department closely in my professional capacity, so I thank you for all the, all of you for the phenomenal job you do. But one piece of information which was kind of new was that individuals can request your ambulance service for transfers, and it'll cost half as a private ambulance service. So I think that's something I personally didn't know myself, so I'm glad you brought this up. So at least whoever is watching this or listening to this, they'll know that they have options in case they want transfers, yeah.
Yeah, especially if you're in the hospital. Oftentimes, the hospitals will go to their, their go-to contracted EMS service, but if you do request us, then they can make that call to our office and schedule that transfer.
Schedule the transfer if I have the price. Okay. Now, thank you for that information.
Andrew, I just wanted to thank you, especially the education piece you just talked about with educating families around safe sleep. That's being proactive, and so please make sure that your team of 68 people know that their efforts are appreciated. Really, great job. Very professional. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which I request first is consider permission for EMS to attend the EMS World Expo in New Orleans.
Should've stayed up here, I'm sorry. So this is a expo that travels throughout the nation. This year, it is in New Orleans. It's a very good expo to attend, very good educational opportunity. So we mainly focus on management practices, medical billing, legal considerations, ethics, and we focus on those classes. It is October 14th through the 18th, and we do have the necessary appropriated funds in our.
Within your budget.
In our budget to pay for everything, lodging, meals, everything, so on and so forth.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is consider permission for EMA to approach the council to purchase a vehicle. Mr. Butcher, Larry Butcher. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Butcher, EMA Director. I'm before you to ask permission to go before the council to consider a new vehicle. I've been working with my liaison to pull this together. I do have, if I may approach.
Sure.
I do have three bids that we can look at as well, which I've also given to the council.
Thank you.
So is this an additional vehicle or a replacement vehicle?
This is a replacement, sir. I will be trading in my vehicle to replace, replace the one that I have.
And you also indicated that you've already had conversations with your liaison.
Yes, I've already had conversations with my liaison and several council members as well.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Next is consider request USS Indianapolis commissioning donation. This is a request that was brought up by Commissioner Rosinski. USS Indianapolis is being built, it will be commissioned, and this is a donation that counties make, and the county's name is on the, on the ship. Ms. Winski, do you have any comments on this?
Just one. This is not taxpayers' money. This will, the donation will come from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item is item D, consider permission for GIS to attend the ESRI User Conference in San Diego. Yes.
Good afternoon, or good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Schultz, this is kind of a dual request. The GIS director actually falls under Joey, the auditor, and then one employee falls under me. He's a Level III Assessor Appraiser. I have the funds in my continuing ed and travel funds to pay for the flight and the hotel, and Joey would pick up the, the meals and incidentals. So I'm not going, she's not going, but we're wanting to send staff.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item E, consider permission for APS investigators to attend the NAMI Conference in Seattle.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Christine Harlow, Director of Adult Protective Services, Division of the Prosecutor's Office. I'm here today requesting permission for myself and one of my investigators to attend the National Alliance on Mental Illness Conference Convention that they have every year. This year, it happens to be in Seattle. We went last year. It was in New Orleans. It was a fantastic conference. Part of those that we serve are those who have mental health issues and addictions, and it was a very good training last year. We learned a lot. We, this would be, again, another great option for myself and the investigator to bring back to my unit some new skills, some new information. So we're requesting this. This is, I have money in my budget. It's all state-funded that we already have in our approved budgets.
Mr. President, I move to approve, and thank you for saying you're going to bring the information back to share. That's awesome.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. And both, you know, all of us are very supportive of making sure that you're adequately trained and funded because, because in my professional work, I see the need for adult protective services to get involved, especially in situations where individuals have mental health issues. So I appreciate it.
It's growing and growing, yes.
It is growing, yeah, yeah. So I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
And then the next item on the agenda is old business, consider revision to the county's drug testing policy. Barb Mossman.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Barb.
... today. I'm here to address, we've added a little bit more language to our revised drug screen policy that we just did back in March. The issue of the CBD oil has become very prevalent with a lot of users, and so we thought it was very important to make sure our county employees are aware of that there is some levels of THC that is contained in the CBD oils. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read the language that we have added to our policy for that.
Yeah, please do. Because it is important, everybody understands, because this is, CBD oil is being used quite often. It is legal, but it is not regulated by FDA. So the amount of THC in the CBD oil is, it varies depending on the make, and some of them can potentially make a drug screen come back past you, and that may result in individuals getting into trouble. So I appreciate you looking into it here. Please go ahead and read that.
Okay. The language that we're going to be adding is drug test results positive for THC do not distinguish between marijuana and CBD oil, which per Indiana law is permitted to be 0.3% THC. As a result of that, La Porte County Government's Medical Review Officers are unable to accept CBD use as a defense for the THC positive test result. If you are a user of CBD oil, please be aware that CBD oils are not FDA-regulated and are not at all manufactured the same. There is no guarantee that the label on the product accurately reflects what substance are present and in what quantities. Any employee should not count on the label on the CBD oil bottle as conclusive evidence of this concentration. Mary, that is the language that we're going to be adding. Mary Wellness from Figment Group also forwarded to me some more information that she did find through the State of Indiana, and I'm going to be posting that information out on the employee's website, which does specify a little bit more language on the CBD oil, how employees can look at obtaining the certificate for the product to see what those concentrations are, where the hemp is coming from that is used to be manufactured, so.
Thank you. Any comments?
No. Move to approve, Mr. President.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2019-2, coroner's non-reverting fund.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioner Brilson, the, the council made one change to the ordinance, and so like reconciling bills that are different from House and Senate, it comes back to you. The only change was in C, which says the fiscal body of the county may appropriate money, allowing the discretion to remain there, and so we're recommending approval of the revised 2019-2 to adapt to the changes recommended by the council.
I entertain a motion for.
Mr. President, move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move forward to the new business. The first item in new business is consider proclaiming EMS Week May 19 through 25th. Andrew McGuire.
Andrew, we're going to have to give you a seat up front.
Well, I just kept standing back there. I would ask if I could have the proclamation read, if that would be appropriate.
Please do, yeah.
Thank you. Would you like to, or would you like me to?
You're welcome to read it then. Great.
Okay, thank you. So proclamation designating the week of May 19 through the 25th of 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas members of the La Porte County Emergency Medical Service Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas Emergency Medical Care dramatically improves the survival rate, recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Service Providers have traditionally served as the safety net of America's healthcare system, and whereas La Porte County Emergency Medical Services Team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of La Porte County Emergency Medical Services Team, whether a career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas La Porte County residents benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of La Porte County Emergency Medical Services Provider by the San Machine Emergency Medical Services Week, and now therefore the Board of Commissioners of La Porte County, State of Indiana, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through the 25th, 2019, as Emergency Services Week.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
And again, very, very grateful to you and your entire team for all the work you do.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for that option.
Mr. President, I move to approve the resolution.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to, if I could, just take this opportunity to invite everybody to our EMS Week award ceremony. It's on Wednesday, May 22nd, here at 11 o'clock, here in this room. Our guest speaker, speaker will be Maria Fruth from the Healthcare Foundation, and a light lunch will be served, so I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, and don't leave. Thank you, and don't leave. Consider approval of 2019 fare contract for EMS.
Yeah, I did forward this to Mr. Friedman for his approval.
Any comments?
No, this is consistent with prior agreements that we drafted for the EMS special details, and we're recommending approval.
I entertain a motion.
Thank you. Mr. President, I move to approve the special detail agreement for EMS working with LaPorte County Fair.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider third-party administrator contract renewal. John Jones and Garrett Kezner. John, I was watching you sitting there, and all this talk is going about EMS, and I was thinking, I wanted to thank you for the work you have done as the past EMS director for the county.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Andrew stated that the EMS started in 1974, and I started in 1978. So if that tells you anything, I was one of the pioneers of what was an emerging and quickly-growing industry and technology, and I think that they've grown to be the best in Indiana, and I'm very proud of them.
Thank you.
Again, John Jones here representing Michiana Insurance Services. I'm here with Michiana's Principal, John Klingemeyer, and Garrett Kezner of Gallagher Basset Services, your third-party administrator. I will ask Garrett to present his proposal for TPA services in the contract following my presentation, if that's okay. Here to review and obtain approval for your May 27th, 2019 renewal for property and casualty insurance. In your folders, you'll find the premium spreadsheet I prepared for you, as well as the renewal proposals. The coverages are materially unchanged, so I think we can work off the spreadsheet as I highlight some points of interest. We have experienced some increased premium this year in certain lines of business for various reasons, which I'll comment on. Over the past previous years, we've been able to stay relatively flat year-to-year with some nominal increases and, in some cases, lower premiums. Of particular notice this year, I'd like to point out that the workers' compensation policy premium was reduced by $59,323 for the 2018-2019 year. Again, after a considerable reduction for the 2017-2018 year, that reduction was $24,006 for a total savings of $83,329 over the two-year period. This is particularly important, as this has allowed us to reduce your overall out-of-pocket expenses, wherein other lines of business we realized increases this year. Our work comp carrier, Bitco, has engaged in a successful risk management effort, making 24 site visits in the past three years, which have resulted in risk reduction, recommendations, and cooperation with department administrators. The outcome has been realized in real savings. The risk management effort continues, as risk managers have already visited three departments this year, including the Sheriff's Department Maintenance Garage, the Building Maintenance Department, and the Human Resources Department, to discuss policy with Barb Mossman. We continue to monitor in other areas the accuracy of the vehicle schedule by conducting a redundant check of the inventory each year. It is incumbent upon the department heads to contact us when there are changes, and I would, I would like to say that in some cases, we've had some issues with notifications. It remains extremely important that they do contact us when trading or adding or deleting a vehicle. So I wanted to make sure that that was brought up today. Those aren't blanketed. Those are, need to be added as their, as their purchase. On the spreadsheet, you will see that we've had some decreases in premium for certain lines of business and some increases in others due to various factors, including industry-wide rate increases, increased property values, and increased exposures. Where previously we were offering three deductibles for auto physical damage, we now offer one. That's the only change in coverage. Our experience rating for auto insurance has gone down five points this year, which is another positive outcome trend that we have continued to see with a lower claims history. Overall, due to the success in lowering the work comp, we have actually lowered the county's out-of-pocket for all lines over the past two years, while seeing an increase this year overall of $18,798 compared to last year. Over the two previous years, we are actually lowered in premium by about $5,000. I believe we're on the right track, as we have coalesced a great group of carriers in the package we have designed for the county, and we have continued to experience a great working relationship with our current TPA service provider, Gallagher Basset, and with all of our carriers. We have had no remarkable claim disputes to date. At this time, if you'll allow me to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah, so John, I guess my only question is, I see that you've done some things to lower our premium. Are there any other suggested areas, including training, education, employee, you know, information that would be helpful to help us keep, at least keep our insurance at the present rate or lower it?
Yes, and we actually, we do have resources for those things, all of those things, and we made those available to both human resources and department heads. So we have training, we have templates for policies available, and throughout the year, those 24 visits that I mentioned have been instrumental, and we've gotten great cooperation. They've actually made policy recommendations that have taken place on a county level. Not only have they visited the departments, in some cases, they've actually gone on job sites. For instance, if there's been a repair of a road, they've gone out to witness that. They followed up with a recommendation letter about the placement of cones, this particular practice that was recommended to reduce risk. So all that's ongoing, and we can increase that through cooperation with department heads to make those, those resources available.
Thank you. It brings to mind the lawsuit we had with the playground issue, which may have, may or may not have been a frivolous lawsuit, but we still got dinged for it.
Sure.
And, you know, simply looking for problems before someone claims them as a problem is probably a pretty proactive way, and we, we need to do that. Not that you need to do it, but you need to tell us what we need to do.
Okay.
Because that's your expertise and not ours. And so if there are any suggestions you may have that would keep us consistent and making sure that we're doing what we need to do, if you could let the Commissioners know, we'll take...
Sure, if I could too, yeah, on that, because I think it's a very good point you make. Gallagher Basset has been very good at working on risk prevention.
Right.
Loss avoidance issues. It doesn't mean we can't get better.
Right.
I think you make a very good point, but one of the benefit of having a good third-party claims adjuster is the recommendations they make on reducing exposure, but as you say, that recent litigation makes clear, we can always get better at it as well.
Right. Thank you.
Can I make two comments in regards to that?
Absolutely. Please do.
And the first one would be that, as a matter of practice, I've talked to our customer service rep that is assigned to the county in our office to make it a practice now to scan in those recommendation letters and send you a copy.
Good.
So that you have better awareness, because right now it goes to the department head. The department head has 30 days to respond to that recommendation on what their action is going to be, and in most cases, they just react to the recommendation and comply. But I'd like to make you aware of that, because I realize that you're not receiving a copy of that.
Right.
HR does in some cases, but not all. And if the particular, if they go to EMS, Andrew would get a notification, or Bob Young, et cetera. Second to that, I'd make the comment that they don't only make visits and then recommendations that follow that, they also follow claims. So if there's a trend, for instance, with workers' comp, that we have back injuries, there is lifting training that goes on, but if there's another risk trend that we see, there's visits made after a claim as well to discuss and inspect the property.
Good.
Inspect the procedure, and then make recommendations, both reactively and proactively.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I have a question? Compared to the last renewal, we, we added fairgrounds in the inventory of properties that are insured.
Yes.
And that also contributed to a slight increase probably.
Correct. That contributed to $21,000 worth of increased property. There are over 64 properties on the fairgrounds, if you can believe that.
Okay. Very good. So you have two separate things that we need to adopt today. One is related to Michiana Insurance and the other one related to Gallagher Basset. Is that correct?
Yes, I'd like approval to renew the property and casualty before you on the spreadsheet for May 27th, 2019, and then following that, there's a separate contract between the county and Gallagher Basset, and Mr. Kezner will present that to you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Michiana Insurance, that is, for the property and casualty renewal.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Garrett?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right. My name is Garrett Kezner, Gallagher Basset Services of Account Management. I am the account manager who oversees the LaPorte County's book of business on the property, liability, and auto lines, and each and every year, roughly around this time, we do recollect as far as discussing the claim rates, of which our adjusters do oversee, adjudicate, and also work, especially with Mr. Friedman, to decipher what are the proper plan of actions and protocols to reach those closures, to reach those claims to closures within a reasonable amount of time. So as of this year, the first page is actually just a pricing table as far as with your lines of businesses, and column one, the liability portion does include the auto, general, and also professional liability. In the second column, you will see the estimated claim frequencies. These claim numbers are assessed by a 12-month rolling analytical board that we use, just to project the next following 10 months of activity. With the original proposal that I did receive, they were slightly inflated, because we did receive some incurred but late-reported claims, in particular with the professional liability. I did an analysis based off of the true-ups and the reconciliations that our AR department does conduct on the behalf of the county. It's not a trend, so what I did was to lower those estimated claim projections to come down to a total fee just for the claims of $37,380, which is a slight, I do believe, an $1,800 increase from prior year. With the administration data services that you do see in the second section, just right below the second bolded row, the blue-bolded row, that includes just administration of the claims data managements, which is our RMS systems that we scour for analytics to help identify trends, and also to help identify opportunities to improve risk control for the county. So all in all, with the projected service fee and the estimated annual fee for the administration services, the total services from May 27, 2019 to May 27, 2020 is $39,000, sorry, $39,812, which is roughly a $3,800 increase from expiration year contract.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have the numbers year-to-year? So auto liability, for example, what was last year's?
Of course.
The total, you said, is 3,800, but it'd be interesting to, to see what the year-to-year comparison is.
So what I could do, once I get back into the office, I could do a three-to-a-five-year analysis, which is an excellent benchmarking to identify those trends, to give you a firm foundation as far as not only what has occurred historically, but also projection notice as well. But as far as the 2018 renewal, the only increase, the vast increases that I did see were the auto property, auto damage, which increased from 50% from prior year, so the claim projection as of the 2018 renewal was at eight, for this renewal is at 16. And then the second line of coverage that was a slight increase from prior year was general liability, the damage. As of 2018, the claim projection was 11, and this year is only 15, so that just was marked as a 29% increase.
Okay. That's huge. 29% increase is huge. So I, what can we do to control those costs? Shaw, can you, can I ask for some advice?
Yes, they've been heavily involved in claims investigation for us. I mean, we've, as you know, we had the sheriff's jail suits. We're working what we can to try to reduce exposure there. You'll recall with the jail medical contract that you approved, that should help as well, but frankly, part of their services is the investigation of various claims. And, I mean, they, they work hard at it, and, but we've got to continue to continually work at risk prevention and liability reduction. I should note for the record, too, and we should have a shout-out to one of their real franchise players, Sharice Seur, who is retiring this summer. Sharice has been the lead claims adjuster assigned to our county, has done an outstanding job working with the Auditor's Office, my office. We've, we've asked Garrett, make sure that he moves somebody up from the farm team who can be a starter like, like Sharice. She was outstanding, but I wanted to at least note for the record her outstanding service to the county over these many years, and I think we all wish her a happy retirement starting this summer.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have to express our gratitude to her also.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. So I'm going to entertain a motion...
Thank you. I move to approve the Gallagher Basset contract.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item D in new business. Jay Sullivan, consider opening bids for bridge number 34.
Good morning. Morning, I guess. Yeah, Jay Sullivan, county engineer, and we received bids for bridge number 34, which was damaged last spring, actually. It's been closed since last spring, and I put an RFP out after working with FEMA considerably, and they, it's, it's a, they're going to, it's an 80/20 grant, I believe, 75/25, 80/20 grant for FEMA to get the bridge, reopen, the approach to the bridge fixed and reopen. This is on 500 South and St. Joe County Line.
Mr. President, we've got two bids, both timely received, one from LaPorte Construction for the approach replacement of Bridge 34. The bid offer indicates a total contract price of $639,595. That is the LaPorte Construction proposal. Reeve Riley has submitted a bid, again, as I indicated, timely received, a total contract price for this particular bridge replacement of $568,991. There's, of course, the breakdown of the various parts of this bid, and so we would ask that you show the bids as received and forwarded to the department head for recommendation.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can bring it back to us for approval then. Next item on the agenda is consider appointment of Michelle Barber as Assistant Director of the Historical Society Museum. This is a recommendation that came from Mr. Bruce Johnson, who's the president of the LaPorte County Historical Society Board of Directors.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation from the LaPorte County Historical Society Board of Directors to hire Michelle Barber as Assistant Director of the LaPorte County Historical Society Museum.
Thank you. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider agreement to transfer ownership of retired canine Hokey to Deputy Andrew Hahn. Sheriff Boyd.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hokey came to us in 2008. He's served approximately 11 years, and he is at the end of his service life. After consulting with his handler, our coordinator of our canine program, and his veterinarian, it's been decided that he would be retired April 1st, and similar to what we've done in the past, we would like to transfer ownership of Hokey to his handler, Deputy Drew Hahn. And we do have a, an agreement, which we've utilized in the past, and we've given it to Mr. Friedman for review, and we're recommending that the transfer go through. We're asking for your approval of that.
We also want to wish Hokey a happy retirement as well.
Hokey, happy, happy trails ahead.
I, I'd also like to point out that although he was retired, he was called out from retirement to active duty last week. We had a suicidal 12-year-old boy who was autistic and threatened to jump off the roof of a commercial building, and our negotiators, while negotiating with him, one of the things that he wanted to do was to be able to pet a German shepherd. So he's got such a kind demeanor about him, we called him from off-duty, and he came out, and we were able to fulfill that 12-year-old's wish, and he was able to spend a little time with the German shepherd.
Wow, that's a wonderful story.
Nice story.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, I move that we consider the agreement and approve it, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And the next item is consider proclaiming Correctional Officer Bearness Week from May 5th through 11th. Sheriff Boyd.
I've got a proclamation that I'd like to give you, and in the past, you've designated the National Correctional Officers Week, if I could give that to you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, would you like to read that?
Well, you have it now, so it makes it difficult for me to read.
All right. I'll read it. "To all, to whom these presents may come greetings, whereas correctional facilities across the United States are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession, and whereas correctional officers and employees are resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice and our nation, and whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses..." And whereas the career of the correctional officers and employees is often very challenging and stressful, the dedicated individuals who work in the Laporte County Jail every day perform their duties well and with great pride. And whereas Laporte County Jail correctional officers and employees are brave, courageous, and tenacious individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep the public safe and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Laporte County, do hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, 2019, as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in the county of Laporte. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And please convey our gratitude to all the officers and the staff at the jail.
Absolutely. Well, I'd like to have Captain Ott and his administrative staff come forward. I've got a couple things I'd like to say about our correctional officers. On May 5th, 1984, President Ronald Reagan designated the Second Week of May as National Correctional Officers' Week. In his proclamation, he stated, quote, "Historically, correctional officers have been viewed as guards occupying isolated and misunderstood positions in prisons and jails. In recent years, the duties of these officers have become increasingly complex and demanding. They're called upon to fill simultaneously custodial, supervisory, and counseling roles. The professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect. The important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition from the public that it deserves. It's appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are a vital component in the field of corrections," unquote. National Correctional Officers' Week recognizes those individuals who take on the difficult task of working in the field of corrections. Perhaps no law enforcement entity is more underappreciated than the correctional officer. The value correctional staff play in public service is largely unknown to the public that they serve. The public often show their support for law enforcement, but the correctional officer is often forgotten about or simply left out of the discussion. Those who work in corrections often find themselves in a very thankless job. Our deputies assigned to our jail walk into our facility where others simply drive by and stare and wonder what life is like inside. They witness firsthand the things that most people only see on TV, and those that witness them would rather forget. Our jail deputies' support and our treatment staff put themselves in harm's way to advance a mission of protecting the public. They protect staff and they protect inmates while at the same time helping offenders change their behavior to become better human beings. The task of returning individuals back to their communities better than what they were when they left becomes more challenging as departments like ours are asked to do more with less. As we celebrate National Correctional Officers' Week next week, I ask that everyone remember that each day, our jail deputies enforce laws within our facility. Each day, our jail deputies, armed with little more than pepper spray, perhaps a taser, are embedded with some of society's most violent prisoners and criminals, people in the public that they're quite frankly afraid of. Every day, our jail officers offer aid, assistance, and direction to those who are unable to help themselves. Each day, they place themselves in danger to protect people that society has discarded. They do this while treating those that they protect with dignity and respect, and oftentimes they don't have that same dignity and respect reciprocated to them. They do this while being outnumbered, perhaps 30 or 40 to 1. Often, our jail deputies are called upon to work extra shifts or double shifts that result in them missing family events, and they have to explain to their children why they're going to miss another game, a recital, a parent-teacher conference, because they have to work. It's crucial during National Corrections Officers' Week that we remember the importance of their mission and the dangers associated with their job. The nature of their job protects our community by limiting the movement of those who have harmed them. In what seems to be an even more difficult task, our jail deputies send incarcerated people back into the community better than what they were when they arrived in our jail. I'd reason that no one in the law enforcement community does more to ensure our communities live without fear. Of our jail deputies, I say this: The public looks for you for safety and protection, and this is a monumental task. It's a task that they're proud of, that they readily accept, and one that is vitally important to our county. What they do is important, it matters, and it takes a special person to do what they do. I thank you for all that you do, and I'd like to introduce Captain Alott, and he'd like to introduce his administrative staff as well.
Thank you, Sheriff. I don't need to speak for those words. They're very well spoken, and I couldn't agree more. The proclamation that we presented and you've read, again, speaks for itself. So we have Sergeant Steve Oliver, Sergeant John Wiltshire, and Jeanne Crowe, she's the administrative coordinator, and these people have been, for me, an absolute honor to work with. But while we're here, we're speaking today for this proclamation. The men and women that serve 24/7 each day, serving Laporte County, for me, in my past year and a half as the jail commander, has been an absolute honor, and I appreciate that you guys are, the Commissioners, are taking the consideration and that Laporte County is recognizing their hard work, they're dedicated people. And I want to thank you for the past year and a half and the coordination that we've recently accomplished, to help Mr. Friedman and our Laporte County Council. We look forward to bigger things. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So I guess, Sheriff Boyd, the words that you read were really poignant. And I, you know, one of the things that's interesting about the work that you do is the high stress involved and the impact on you as humans, and we can't underscore that, that it's, you deal with stress and really dangerous and difficult situations 24/7. When we're all sleeping, you and your team are continuing to keep Laporte County safe, and I think that that can't be minimized, the impact on your families. So please know that your work is appreciated and bring that back to everyone on your team because we couldn't keep our county in the condition it's in as a safe and healthy place to raise families without your help. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And keep up the great work. Appreciate it.
I didn't report under Department Heads, but I'd like to mention that next Friday is a fallen officer's memorial service. It will be held in the Performing Arts Center, the former Elston High School, that will begin at noon, and will be honoring those officers that were killed in the line of duty. Interestingly enough, since the last peace officer's memorial, we've been notified by the Department of Justice that they actually found another officer that was killed in the line of duty in 1909 that we had previously been aware of, a railroad police officer that was killed in the Otis area. And so we're going to be honoring him and adding him to our end of watch as well. Lunch will follow immediately after the ceremony. We're really honored that this year, that Cook County Sheriff, Tom Dart, will be our keynote speaker. It's particularly interesting of Sheriff Dart, as he was recently named by Time Magazine as one of the 100 most influential people in the world. So we're really honored that he'll be here to help us honor those that were killed in the line of duty.
Have you heard Sheriff Dart speak before?
I have. That's one of the reasons we reached out to him.
Yeah, he's a pretty amazing human being, so that'll be a wonderful event.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Next item on the agenda is consideration of EASE contract to assist employee enrollments in health benefits programs recommended by health benefits agent of record.
Good morning again, Bar Mossman, Human Resources Department. We did submit the contract over to Mr. Friedman's office, which he has approved. I also want to note for that, that it does only require one signature on that contract. But basically, the EASE is going to be a platform for county employees to have access to their health insurance benefits and some voluntary benefits on a 24/7 basis. They'll be able to access that through this platform, through their computer, or even their smartphone. This is going to help eliminate some paper forms for the office, help us manage our time a little bit better, and it's also going to be beneficial for orientations with onboarding new employees. Not only are these new employees going to have access to the health insurance, but we're going to be able to submit specific forms to them, such as the I-9 form and tax forms for them to complete prior to coming into our office. We're also going to be able to see the progress that these individuals are making then with regards to those documents.
So basically, it'll help ease administration from the HR perspective, and it'll also help them access that information online anytime they want to.
That is correct. I also have Kim Ramsey from General Insurance Services here also. She's a software and training consultant. If you have any questions for her with regards to the program.
My only comment, just for the record, is that this will cost us $1,000 per month. I think that's important to note for the public. How many employees do we have that would be able to access the system?
This is going to allow access to all county employees, whether full-time or part-time. One thing to note with that, originally, the cost for this was going to be $2 per employee per month, which, based on our county enrollment, right now, we have, with board members and everything, probably close to 800 employees. So this is significantly going to be a lot less than what we initially thought the program was going to cost us.
Excellent. So I guess I do have a question, a software question, and that's, you know, you and I have talked about other types of software to track employees and to be a time and vacation, you know, system. Is there any way that something like that could interface with this system?
I'm still looking into those different programs, and actually, I had a conversation yesterday with the auditor's office with a specific aspect to what we currently have in the payroll department that she is looking into to see if there might be any way we can bring that system to our department heads to be able to access. But as far as HRIS systems, I still am looking into those different programs that are out there. And if they will be able to integrate with this. I will be going to the Human Resources Conference down in Indianapolis. I believe that's in August. So there will be a ton of vendors there that will afford me the opportunity to look at their products hands-on.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion, Sheriff. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consider approving local tracks overpass project. Morning, Mitch.
Morning. How are you, Commissioners?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This recently, I received an email from Nick Minnick, Laporte County Engineer, and they worked successfully in getting a local tracks grant from NDOT. They're partnering with NDOT, essentially take out two at-grade crossings in the town, Norfolk Southern Line, just north of here, two at-grade crossings and replace it with an overpass. Now, as with all bridges in the county, the county maintains them. We have 119 bridges in our inventory now. The requirement is that we, after they build this new structure, which might be five, seven years from now, that it goes into our inventory, and then we're liable, and we have to maintain it, just like the other 119 structures. So it's be 120, and it requires a Commissioner's signature, and we have to name the bridge as well. So looking at our current system, the appropriate name or number of the bridge would be 513.
Bridge number 513.
Technically, it'd be 46-00513.
Something for the Commissioner to consider, you may want to consider naming
Yes.
some of these bridges at some point so that there is some distinction, there's some recognition, whether it's a former county employee, your department head, or an elected official that you want to honor, but it's something to at least for the have the Commissioner.
Something to look forward to, honor the contributions or memory of individuals who have contributed to our county.
Yeah, so I saw that in the note from the city engineer from Laporte that we needed to name it, and I got all excited, and then I realized no other bridges have been named, so I didn't want to start a trend. But I do think that that's, you know, there's so many people that over the, you know, last 100 years have contributed greatly and made Laporte County, you know, a special place. So that's, I think, an opportunity we want to consider.
I entertain a motion to approve this project.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mitch. Next item is consideration of center and company service agreement for 2019. Laporte County has a financial advisor and special engagement to assist the clerk's office with reconciliation of child support accounts.
Special engagement, too.
Morning, Carl.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Carl.
How are you?
Good.
All right. Thank you for consideration of our agreement. This is to serve as your financial consultant for 2019 in a variety of matters for both you and other departments and auditor's offices needed. The second addendum is specifically for working with the clerk of the court and reconciling the Indiana welfare account, support account, that the Indiana Child Support Bureau has recommended that this work needs to be brought up to date very quickly.
Very good. Shaw, any comments on the contract?
No, we're comfortable with both. As Carl's indicated, you previously designated him, of course, as your financial advisor, so this contract reflects that representation. And the special contract that's required to help reconcile the child support accounts, we're recommending that as well. And Carl has already reached out to the Child Support Bureau, and I think they're reassured that he's on it and, in fact, pushed back some of the response dates that were originally required. So that's encouraging as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
No, no questions. Move to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Carl. Next item on the agenda is consider a resolution seeking line item authority from county council for county website improvements, equipment upgrades from Comcast fees. Now, this is something that has come up in the past, and we are taking action on this item because we felt that the county website needs to be improved and made up-to-date and user-friendly, and Commissioner Billson-Mateus has taken a keen interest in it, and I would like to go ahead and comment on that.
So, Mr. President, thank you. During my last year, working my way across the county, the subject of the county website came up repeatedly. People bringing, making mention that the county website was hard to navigate, meetings weren't easy to find, minutes weren't easy to find, information that they were seeking about county services were difficult to locate on the website. So I worked with Darlene and done some research. The website has not had a significant investment since 2003, and some of us are old enough to remember what the internet was like in 2003 when we had dial-up, and it was really, you know, kind of, we were all learning about how to organize files and use email. We have flown light-years ahead of that, and now the internet is a utility that's used by everyone every day on our smartphones. We can't fall further behind. If you look at the website, it certainly, and Joey and I have had numerous conversations about it, it certainly does not present our county well. We look like we are really kind of a backwards place, and we all know that we aren't. Not only does it present poorly, so if you're coming to invest in Laporte County, you want to relocate your family here, you want to buy real estate, you want to, you know, invest further in your own, it just doesn't, it doesn't capture the flavor of Laporte County. So we've done some internal work, and we began to talk to external providers. I know that last year, you had a provider from, I think it was Oklahoma or somewhere, offer a proposal to do a $78,000 overhaul of the website, and when I heard that, I called Joey and said, "I don't know who this person is, but they're trying to sell us a template that they are using across the country for government, and it can't possibly cost $80,000. That just doesn't make any sense to me." So we've worked with the auditor's office, we've investigated, there's a local company that is preparing a proposal for us. It will be about, I would say, more, almost 75% less than that amount is what it's looking like. The annual and monthly fees are significantly reduced. We are keeping the money locally. We would then have a local company that would help us make sure that we've got the security and levels of encryption that are needed. Some of the other departments have their own websites. They may still want to keep their own website, but some of those websites, my explorers has told, has explored that they are not secure, and so that's a concern, as we all know, that web, online security is a huge issue. So I think that taking some of this Comcast franchise fee money is good use. It's, you know, it meets the letter of the franchise agreement, as the auditor's office has explored and our attorney has explored, and I think it's time for us to really create a vehicle for information that our communities can use. In addition, our online meetings are really important for people to be able to access information if they can't come here, and so we do need some updates to our, to our sound system, and hoping that the county council can support these kinds of improvements that are basically increasing the transparency of government, which, as you know, is a big issue for the Commissioners. We want to make sure that people have the information that they need. It's at their fingertips, it's on their mobile phone, and that we stay contemporary and put our best foot forward when we're presenting Laporte County. Joey, if you have anything you want to throw in?
No, I think you did a great job explaining it, and I look forward to having a new website.
Okay.
Yeah, I echo your sentiments, Commissioner Billson-Mateus. I, first of all, we are working on the rural broadband. And so once the broadband is accomplished, when they access our website, it should be presentable, up-to-date, and current. So... So hopefully, I think we'll work on both of these areas, and hopefully we'll have somebody within our staff who can update this on a regular basis.
Right.
That way, whoever is trying to reach out to us, they have all the current information which is presented in a very professional way. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt this, that way we can forward this to the council for funding.
Mr. President, one point of order. Since it's a resolution, we offer public comment at points of resolution, so if there's any public comment, we should probably hear that at this time.
Anybody from the public would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion now.
Mr. President, I move to approve the resolution from the Board of Commissioners endorsing the local control professional administration, oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Ah, wait a second, sorry. To the county council, asking for county website improvements, equipment upgrades from the Comcast franchise fees, and this would require a line, establishment of a line item by the county council.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And then the last, no, not the last, we have one more left. So the considered resolution endorsing the local control and professional administration of the South Shore Railroad and engaging Cohen and Mallet LLP to consider rights and remedies to preserve local governance of the NICD board. So for all of those who are paying attention to this particular item, recently, in the state budget, there was some additional funding that was approved for the double tracking of the South Shore, and so we are very, very grateful to the legislature as well as the governor's office for making this happen. But inserted in that budget was language that would disband the NICD board as it exists today, and that will also remove the local control and participation by the four counties like we have done before. We all believe that local self-governance is a very important concept, and that's something we would like to continue to support, and so based on that premise, this resolution has been brought up, and Commissioner Billson-Mateus, I'll
Can we have public comment?
Yeah. Before you comment, then I'll open it for public comment if anybody else from the public would like to comment on this particular item. Yes?
Hi, thank you Commissioners. I'm State Representative Ryan DeVorek.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Glad to be here. Shaw Friedman, we've been speaking the last couple of days, and he suggested that I come by today and talk. I do represent three townships in northern LaPorte County. For a little bit, I want to give a little bit of background on exactly what happened because it was confusing and fairly unprecedented, what happened in the last days of the state's legislative session this year. So as you know, back in 1977, the Chicago South Shore Railroad at the time was one of those probably handful of railroads that declined to join Amtrak for passenger service, and it wanted to just go full freight. The federal government gave the state of Indiana the opportunity to respond before they shut down passenger service, and that was when NICD was created. It was created originally as an organization sponsored by the four counties in which the line runs to subsidize passenger rail service. By the late 80s, that rail line went fully bankrupt, and NICD eventually took over the operation of passenger service, and by 1990 had bought and purchased the actual track itself. So the way it stood up until last week was Lake Porter, LaPorte, and St. Joseph Counties appointed members to the board of NICD that essentially owned and operated the South Shore Line. Of course, it's always been a goal to sort of improve and expand service, we want a better product, and so two years ago, we were able to actually negotiate a pretty landmark billion-dollar deal to do the double tracking, to speed up the service between Chicago and South Bend, as well as begin the Westlake Corridor project as well. And this is a major project, and it really, we took over a year of working in a bipartisan way with everybody from the delegation along the line, Republicans, Democrats in the House, in the Senate, and the governor, to get everybody on board of the same plan, to how we could come up with federal matching funds, state matching funds, and local matching funds. And there's local tax matches to this project as well. And I'm happy to say that that was tremendously successful. We had the governor up to Michigan City to, you know, toot the horn on the train and cut the ribbon and say, "We're ready to rock," and everybody was really happy. Fast forward to a week ago, Thursday was the last day of the legislative session, and Wednesday, the day before the last day, was the first time we saw the final conference committee report for the budget. And in that budget, on Wednesday, the day before the last day of session, was brand-new language that no one had ever discussed publicly about really the operation of the entire NICD organization. The governor was proposing an additional appropriation of about $205 million, but was also taking over the NICD board. And so essentially, all the, the way the board works now is, you know, the counties appoint members to the board, I think there's two members from each county, plus there's a rider member, a labor member. The new composition of the board would have the governor appoint one person from each county, and it would be, the president of the new board would be the director of NDOT, so the governor would control the board. I'll get back to some problems with that. Now, the rationale at the time, the Ways and Means Chairman, Todd Houston, said to me on Wednesday, when the budget first became public, he said, "I know this is big and new, if you want to have the governor's people talk to you, I can set that up for tomorrow morning." This would be Thursday morning, the day we vote on it. I said, "Please do." So we gathered the whole Democratic delegation from the corridor, which is most of the members at that point, because the Republicans had already been briefed on it. So we had about a dozen members of the House of Representatives crammed into an office to hear from the director of the IFA, the state budget director, and the governor's chief of staff as to what the heck was going on. And they basically said this, they said, "The FTA had recently approved a couple of projects, one in Washington State, one in Arizona, that were going into the same pot of money, where the federal match for those projects had changed, whereas initially it was about a 50-50 match, had gone down to about a 60-40." And that it looked like the South Shore project could be affected the same way. In other words, what we had assumed would be a 50-50 match could change to a 60-40 match. If that were the case, and there were also some additional requirements, they were, the feds were talking about adding additional contingencies that could cost another 50-some million, I can't remember off the top of my head. So they were looking at a potential new cost of about $185 million if the same criteria that were applied to these projects in Arizona and Washington were applied to the Indiana one. So they said that they were going to appropriate money to cover this possibility, but in order to do so, they had to take over the board. And I said, "Please explain to me why, how one, number one, is related to the other." They get, the closest they got was the, the director of the IFA had said that the FTA seemed to be uncomfortable with the relationship, and they weren't used to working with a setup where NICD was involved with the state and the Indiana Finance Authority. It made no sense to me. I said, "Do you have anything in writing where the FTA has ever expressed anything along these lines before?" They said, "No." I mean, NICD's been around for 40 years now, so it made no sense to me. I also asked for confirmation that the match was going to change, because each of these projects is different, and I found it a little hard to believe that the match would change, number one, because Congressman Visklosky has been a big supporter of this project, who sits on the appropriations committee and now finds himself in the majority. If he knew that there was going to be an additional $200 million cost to the state, I assume that he would have at least spoken to us. And it turns out, there is no guarantee that it's actually going to cost more money. In fact, the governor's chief of staff told me that we may very well still end up at the 50-50 match, and this new appropriation may be unnecessary. It's just a possibility they want to account for. So the group of us there sort of gave them a piece of our mind, and I proceeded to vote against the budget for that in various reasons. But we're left now with the, with the situation where the governor has essentially decided to take over this railroad. I think there's a couple of major problems. I'd asked them at the time whether they had given any thought to the possibility that this takeover could jeopardize the local match. As you know, each of the counties along the corridor has contributed their own taxpayer dollars to this project to do a local match portion, and the IFA director's response immediately was to say, "No, that's impossible, all those funds are obligated already." They believed those funds to be locked in. And I said, "Well, those funds are obligated based upon NICD as what was constituted at the time the agreement was made. If you're changing one party to the agreement, I think it changes the obligations as well." They started to get nervous, and I think since then, they've become more nervous about whether that's a possibility. But the biggest issue of all is, as you know, governments have the police authority to regulate all sorts of matters, but that authority does not extend to essentially divesting title to private property, that's called a takings. NICD was the owner and operator of the South Shore Line. It actually owns the tracks, runs the passenger service, and leases out tracks for freight services well. The owner of NICD were the four counties that comprised it. I don't believe the governor has the authority to, by statute, take ownership of private property. So that's another big issue. So we've talked with members of the St. Joseph County Council, I think Shaw has spoken to some folks in Lake and Porter County as well. I don't know Cohen and Malott, I think they're, they sound like they're a great law firm. I know they've had some success in bringing claims against the state. I don't really care what each of the counties does. What I'm encouraging every county to do is to at least retain some representation to explore your options. I think that there are any number of ways in which this action could be potentially illegal, and I want to make sure that our communities are represented and that we're not railroaded in this issue.
You know, first of all, thanks for coming and sharing some of the insights as to what transpired at the State House, and that's very, very helpful for us to understand what happened. And so there have been several discussions going on within the county officials here as to how to respond to this, and based on that, we brought this resolution for consideration today.
Good. I think that's the right choice, and I think getting some, some legal representation to at least further advise the counties on ways to proceed is the best thing. I think there's definitely some possibilities that we couldn't move forward, and I just want to make sure the taxpayers here are protected. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, Commissioner Billson-Mateus.
So I do have some comments, and I, as those of you that have been in conversation with me this week know, I struggled a bit with this. You know, it's, it's a political decision to pick a fight with the state legislature or the governor's office, and I understand that. But, you know, I am a big believer in local control, I'm also a big believer in preserving investments and tax dollars, and so I, I've spent time on the phone with some people in this room late into the night to talk about options and seeking whether other counties would join us in protesting this move. Self-governance is a really important principle of democracy. Our taxpayers here in LaPorte County have invested over 42 years in this rail operation, and to have it pulled out from, from under us just doesn't feel like it's a part of our Hoosier values. So in order to make sure that I made a lot of sense today, I decided to write the governor a letter, and I'd like to read that into the record. Dear Governor Holcomb, may I call you Eric? It's probably best because it looks like we are now closely related. Since you have in one fell swoop taken control of the Northwest Indiana NICD board and put the current board out to pasture, I really do get it. You, as our state leader, is investing big tax dollars in the South Shore double track project, and you want to say, "However, we are taxpayers, and these dollars to which we contribute year after year to the state are ours actually, not some kind of venture capital investment funds. Our money is being returned to northern Indiana as an investment into the economic growth of our part of the state. This action is surely not the way to build collaborative bridges or a renewed commuter train system, for that matter. So take just a moment to listen to our story. Back when you were just a young boy in central Indiana, the South Shore train chugged along day after day, and 12 people served diligently every year, year after year, for some 42 years, setting policy, seeking funding, making capital improvements using tax dollars, and running this commuter rail to serve Northwest Indiana cities and towns across the region, as well as serving our larger neighbor, one of the largest metropolitan cities in America, Chicago. As a connector train, we know we meet a need. Workers get to their jobs, and Indiana families have relied on us over all these decades of service. Our families have told us stories of how important the train is to their livelihood, and business leaders have spoken to us about the South Shore, quote, "the little engine that could," unquote, which directly impacts economic growth and prosperity in northern Indiana. We've lived it. Through good times and bad, our little engine that could chugged along. In our really rough years, back in the 70s, when times were tough, this little South Shore train picked up the disgusting name, "The Vomit Comet," as we struggled mightily to keep up service, keep our engines clean, and make capital improvements. But yet again, we prevailed and survived, and we continue to chug along. So flash forward to today, the region, the four counties is on the map. Illinois state officials and Illinois people are looking at northern Indiana as an option for their investment. Our homes are well-priced, our business climate is welcoming, taxes are reasonable, and darn it, we Hoosiers are really nice folks, as the personification of Midwestern values, good work ethic, we're family-focused, and have solid values. So if this was Wall Street, this would be described as a hostile takeover. In a surprise move with no discussion, no collaboration, no meaningful explanation, language was added to a budget bill to take over a 42-year-old institution in our community. And that's why this takeover feels so wrong. We have been steady and focused and kept our nose to the grindstone. When we saw a need for service expansion to meet the needs of the future Northwest Indiana, we've done all the heavy lifting to make this project viable and attractive for tax investment. We've had scores of public meetings and public discussions. We've dealt with political pushback and political issues. We've talked to every single town and city across these counties to earn their confidence in this plan. We've built financial support and financial buy-in. We've worked tirelessly to get federal tax support in Washington DC. We, the people here, own the system, and we own its assets, assisted by an amazing group of hard-working men and women who work for NICD and keep us chugging along. Once we got the project all ready to go, wrapped in a gilded ribbon, we were shocked and frankly very displeased that you and state leaders swept in last week and without even a conversation stripped us of local control and our ability to make local decisions that affects our local community. So Governor, please realize that while we are thankful for the tax dollars invested in this important project, our Hoosier values bridle at this hostile takeover move. It doesn't feel square with our history and the integrity and value of local control, as well as our proven ability to drive the train into the future as we have done for over four decades. Please consider, on behalf of the people of Northwest Indiana, your friend Sheila Billson-Mateus, taxpayer and county commissioner, LaPorte County, Indiana.
Nicely said.
So, Mr. President, you know, I am a South Shore user, I don't go every day, but just a couple of weeks back, I took the South Shore to an appointment in Chicago, and I got on the 605 or 610 train, and it was kind of empty starting off at 11th Street in Michigan City. By the time we got halfway to Chicago, the train was crowded, every seat was taken, and by the time we pulled into West Randolph, it was standing room only. So while we have a lot of work to do, and I have heard our taxpayers say, you know, it doesn't get enough use, our ridership has fallen down, we are trying to build a system for the future. It has been locally built, locally owned, self-governed, and I appeal to the governor to reconsider his move. I would suggest that we approve this resolution for adoption with the codicil that other counties join in so that they can share costs with us, and at this time, I'd like to move to approve that resolution.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. One comment I have is that even though the ridership may have fallen a little bit, but when I look at the trends of the younger generation, the millennials, less and less of the millennials are driving cars.
Right.
Actually, more of them take public transportation. I was surprised to see that. As a matter of fact, the auto manufacturers are a little bit nervous about this trend. And so I think it's a great opportunity for us to have this double track And so, I think it's a great opportunity for us to have this double tracking. And we, again, like Sheila mentioned, we appreciate the legislature and the Governor ready to pitch in, in case there is a short one. We appreciate that. But while doing that, we can continue to maintain local control. I think that will be a good thing to do, and I hope they will, they will look at this resolution, and then they will revisit this issue and hopefully, hopefully leave the NICD Board like the way it was with the four counties, trying to continue to take, to participate in local and self-governance. So, thank you very much for that nice letter. Next item on the agenda is considered revision for on-the-job political activity. But we have a lot of items today.
I think you're going to want, was the motion approved on the record?
Did we?
I don't know if we voted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We've all got carried over.
Mr. President, I sent you the resolution, now you've got to move on it.
All right. So, it's been moved, and I'm going to second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. Mark Mossman, Human Resources Director. Before I address the on-job political activity policy, I did forget to mention with the EASE platform that we're going to be bringing into the county, Kim Ransay from GIS is going to be coming on-site to do, help me do training for all county employees.
Okay, very good.
So, I just wanted to mention that since I had forgotten.
That would be a great service, Julie. Yeah, thank you.
On the on-the-job political activity policy, the only language that we're changing on that is previously employees that were paid wholly or partially from funds, federal funds, are eligible to run for office in a partisan election. Mr. Friedman brought to my attention that that language has changed. So, basically, right now, the only, what it's going to state is no employee paid wholly from federal funds is eligible to run for office in a partisan election. So, that's the only change to this language.
So, in the past, it was whether it was wholly or partially?
Correct.
But now, it is only wholly, if it's wholly paid by federal funds. That's the difference.
Yes.
All right. Do we need to adopt this as?
If you would, that would amend it and makes very clear in our policy, to vote is more prevented, but again, this way, it's going to be completely federal funds to bar you from running, whereas there are a number of programs that you both are aware that do get some federal funds, and those folks are not part of running for a full office under the EASE requirement.
Mr. Friedman, for the benefit of those who are watching this, can you take a couple of minutes, just talk a little bit about Hatch Act and what it means?
Sure. The Hatch Act was adopted many years ago with the good reason of ensuring that those who operate in programs that receive federal funds do not engage in political activity. There is, as you know, a bar on political activity on our grounds anyway. I mean, there is to be no political signage, no signage campaigning, politicking of any kind on county property by county employees or others. But this particular provision in terms of the Hatch Act deals with those who are in programs. For instance, there is an employee in the Child Support Office seeking County, the City Council in Michigan City. Under the prior act, might have been barred from seeking office because the Child Support Division receives considerable amount of federal funds. Under the revised Hatch Act rulings, you've got to receive a 100% federal funds in order to bar you from seeking office. And it made good sense. It was found to be much more reasonable around the country to allow those to seek collective office as long as there wasn't 100% federal funds for a particular program. So, that's what the revised rules do, and what you're doing then is simply adopting or adapting our policy to keep up with the current law on Hatch Act.
Thank you very much. With that, I've entered a motion. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mark. All right, we come to the end of our agenda. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bill Simathias.
The only comment I would like to make is if anyone has, lives anywhere in Lepore County, whether you're in one of the cities, if you're in a town, please fill out the survey for our Rural Broadband Assessment Survey. Even if you have great broadband, it's really important, there's a speed test inside the survey. What we are trying to do is map out, using our GIS staff, map out what the needs are around the county based on what we currently have and what we need. So, it's really important for us to have a lot of data points. The survey is on the county website, so if you go to leportcounty.org, it's right across the top. You click on it. I took it this morning. It takes about a minute and a half, two minutes, and it would be really helpful for all of us. Even if you have great broadband already at your home, it would be important for us to have that information. So, that would be, we're meeting again on Friday. It's been a really hard-working group of people. They're doing things on their own time, not waiting for county meetings or for committee meetings, so I think we're going to come up with some great results.
I recently attended a meeting at the Healthcare Foundation of Lepore. It was the second meeting to address the issue of low birth weight babies and infant mortality. So, one of the representatives who came from the state is the person who is helping Prosecutor Mr. Lake on the child fatality review team. So, that process is moving along, so I'm happy to see that it's being reconstituted. And so, I'm going to try to at least participate in the initial meetings to make sure that everything goes according to the plans, you know. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, so moved.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you very much.[1774.33][1774.33][music]